Good evening, it's 7:04, only by that clock. We're going to open the meeting, all the selectmen are present. And we'll start by transmitting a Treasury warrants 50, 50A, 51, 51A, 52, and 52A.
Motion made in second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Approval of minutes, uh, the minutes of the meeting of February 22nd, 2010.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Our first appointment tonight is with Brian Smith, the engineer, project manager of Redding Municipal Light Department for the public hearing relative to request of Redding Municipal Light Department to relocate one pole on Freeport Drive. We heard from Mr. Smith this afternoon, he can't make it. So Mr. Vaughn Bryan is here, or Brian Vaughn?
Vaughn Bryan.
Vaughn Bryan, okay, thank you. Come on up there. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vaughn Bryan, engineer at Redding Municipal Light Department. We are requesting to relocate streetlight pole six, Freeport Drive, approximately 25 feet westally from existing, existing location, located approximately 427 feet westally from Locaya Circle Center Line on the southern side of Freeport Drive.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Under these circumstances, do we, um, do we work with, or do we communicate with, residents that the, that the relocation may have an impact on, or have some?
Is there a abudders list today?
I do see we have an abudders list, but is there communication that goes out to them and do they?
Apparently this is a request from residents at number 21, Freeport Drive, and I thought somebody was supposed to be here from that resident, and also they had, they were supposed to speak to their neighbors about it, that's as far as I know.
Do we get the green cards back?
We do provide this information to all of the abudders, um, and they, in some of the matches, one of the abudders I believe came in today to look at the plan, so they were all offered that opportunity, and they're offered the opportunity to be here, and I know that the chairman will at some, at a given point, ask if any abudders want to speak, so, they are all notified.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Are there any abudders here this evening? Have any questions on this? Okay. Motion from the board? Yeah, any motion?
Well, seeing as we don't hear any objection from any abudders, um, on the face of it, doesn't appear to present any problem, so I'd move to approve the request.
I'll second. Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have to sign that? Are you going to be wait for that?
It's, yeah. Well, yeah, his is a hearing, it's at 7:10.
Right, right. Just going to wait a couple minutes to sign that. Do you want to do a few communications now, that might open up?
I can, if you want.
Well, the chief's not here anyway.
Yeah, we might wait.
Yeah, yeah. We'll just wait till we, our next appointment, scheduled appointment's at 7:10, so we're just going to wait a couple minutes and take care of business.
Now that, now that we have just signed it and then he's left, in a case like that, and I think one we're about to talk about, um, when the utility is in the process of moving the poles, do they have requirements that they need to leave the former pole and now the, the new pole conditioned the way they found it or better? Is there some language that, that they have to adhere to in that process?
They're supposed to remove the other pole, sometimes that takes a while, um, and we have to get after them on that, but there is.
That's a process that's monitored and overseen? Very well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll be at 7:10, our next appointment is with Joseph M. Gleason for Verizon New England Inc., with, uh, for the reason of a public hearing relative to request of Verizon New England Inc. and Redding Municipal Light Department to remove one pole and, and place one pole on Strout Avenue. Mr. Gleason, how are you?
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I'm doing fine, um, hope all the members of the board are doing fine as well. Uh, for the record, my name is Joseph Gleason, I'm a right-of-way agent with Verizon New England Inc., office located 28 Diana Lane in Drakeett. Uh, the petition before you this evening, Mr. Chairman, is similar to the request of my fellow utility employee at Redding Municipal Light. Verizon is looking to relocate one pole at the end of Strout Avenue, as shown on the plan attached to the petition. Uh, Strout Avenue, as many of you probably know, is a cul-de-sac, and there is a pole located at the end of that cul-de-sac in front of the premises at 20 Strout Avenue. Verizon is looking to place that pole, actually relocate that pole about 10 feet in a southeasterly direction from its present location. The reason we're asking to do this is that the pole currently sits exactly in the middle of that homeowner's driveway. Now, I, I don't know the history of that pole, I, and it's sort of a chicken or the egg sort of thing, because I'm looking at it and I'm saying, how did that pole end up in the, in the middle of that driveway? But, there may have been an expansion of the driveway, they may just asphalted around it and what have you, but regardless of how it got to be that way, we shouldn't have the pole in the driveway, and what we'd like to do is accommodate the property owner at 20 Strout Ave, move that about 10 feet off of the driveway, and place a new pole in the location as shown. Um, I think that's, that's about it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is there anybody here from Strout Ave?
We live at.
It's our driveway.
We live at 20 Strout Ave.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you would like this pole moved?
We would love that pole moved.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I, I trust that if there were another driveway 10 feet away, that would have been shown on the plan.
Yeah, actually, the, the location, and I think the, the homeowners will testify, attest to this, the, the location of where it's going is, um, staked in the field, and what we've looked to do is put that on the property line. We like to put the poles on property lines as a matter of course, we can't always do that, but what we can make that accommodation, we will do so, and this pole, so that we're not encroaching upon anybody else's property or what have you, even though it's in the public way, you know, nobody wants a pole moved closer to their house, so we're putting it right there on the property line. Now, um, one of the things about this pole, because it's a, a terminus pole, because this is the end of the cul-de-sac, it's the last pole in the line, I, will require a guying, uh, wire and anchor. I talked to the engineer today, and I said, um, what's the deal with guy? And he says, uh, it's only going to be a short guy, meaning that it's only going to come off the pole at a very tight angle, so there isn't a need to speak to the property owners about securing a, um, guy and anchor easement, so all the work is going to be done in the public way.
Okay, and the guy lines not going back into the middle of that driveway?
No, 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 it's going to come off the back of the pole, uh, and, um, I was quite adamant with the engineer, I said, you, you understand that, that, that guy has to be in the public way, else we have to go to the property owners and seek leave and secure easement rights from them to do that. So he assured me, note, that would be in the public way, and there wouldn't be any issue in that regard.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? Questions or comments or a motion from the board? I'll move to grant the request.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor? Unanimously? Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The next appointment is with Nancy Valli, the executive director of Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, request to conduct Wilmington 6th Annual Happy Birthday Road Race, September 26th, 2010. Hi Nancy. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I am Nancy Valli, the executive director of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, and I am here on behalf of the 14 Chamber Board of Directors to request approval from the town for the chamber to actually coordinate this event that's happened for the last six, uh, five years under the direction of Tom Pizarro. Um, this year, Tom Pizarro was not going to organize the event, we found it an opportunity for the chamber to, to take it on, we approached him, we're working closely together, um, we, he is on our committee, so you can, I feel comfortable with that. Um, we've already met, you have a copy of the application for the runners, um, a copy of our project plan there, and, um, we just wanted to get your approval that it's going to be the same, the last Sunday of September, which it's historically been, and we are, this is formally called, been called the Happy Birthday Road Race, we're just going to keep it at the Wilmington 6th Annual Half Marathon and 5K Road Race presented by the Chamber of Commerce. The proceeds of the race will, um, one of our goals at the chamber this year was to go back to giving donation, scholarships to the high school students, so this is a great tie-in for the chamber, um, proceeds from the race will go to, we're hoping, five, five scholarships from the chamber. And, um, we're also looking to do some type of theme, which we'll be talking with Joanne Betton, um, with the Wilmington Public Schools, we're looking to distribute flyers to the students, which she's historically done in the past, but with more of a theme with, um, you know, some bullets on childhood obesity, and getting families and their children out to walk the 5K, and getting more people involved in that.
Okay, very good. That was going to be one of my questions, as you know, the, um, the money has always gone to scholarships of Wilmington students. Now, what about Wilmington residents that are going to a private high school, or would they be eligible for those scholarships as well? It's just going to be Wilmington?
That's a great point. Um, I do have Holly, who's the president of the chamber, she's kind of been put in charge of the scholarship piece of it, but, um, is, I'm not sure if historically that's been done with Tom. Uh, I believe it's only been to the Wilmington High School, so, but that's something, if it's a, um, concern, we can think about doing that.
Is that the way it's been in the past? Well, uh, I, I'm not certain where all the money has gone, I've not ever received any, you know, specific information.
Last year, I do know that the five scholarships went to the high school, the Wilmington High School.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't recall the, the distribution at the, at the most recent meeting, but I'm sure that's what you say that must have happened. I know there has been, uh, there was a, a contribution once to the town of Wilmington Scholarship Fund, which we've requested, uh, that's a fund that goes exactly as you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, to all of the, to anyone who applies, uh, who is a Wilmington resident.
Right.
And certainly, we would want to ensure that any scholarships that go out, or any of the fundraising, any of the fundraising is, the benefit is some, some Wilmington program of some type.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mind a general question, maybe a comment, um, to that specific point, if there is, if we as a board have a, a preference as to how that, the monies should be handled, that we would like to see the monies handled for this type of an event, um, perhaps, I don't know if we, if, if such a thing does exist, but if we could give some direction to Nancy and to the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, so that in their publicity of this event, that it's, that there's no miscommunications being, uh, being conveyed to the community. Uh, we don't want, uh, a Wilmington resident going to a private school to think that they're eligible, for some reason, the Chamber of Commerce makes it such that they're not, or vice versa for that matter, so, I guess I, you know, it's a good conversation to have, and if there is direction, either that comes out of this meeting, or that we hash out over the next couple of days, to give them direction for the communication, because I think that's an important piece of the communication going forward. That's one thing. Additionally, I guess, just on a personal note, I'm really delighted that this is continuing, I became aware that, that, well, with Tom, um, that this event was kind of suffering and potentially going to go away, just for lack of hands on it, to, to manage it, and so this, I think, is really an opportunity for two really good things to happen. One is for the Chamber of Commerce, uh, which has had a, a recent surge, um, to do something to give back, so it's the businesses in town now having an opportunity to give back to the community, uh, and to the people of Wilmington, uh, as well as, uh, an opportunity to, to raise some funds, raise some awareness, and it's two events in one, which is kind of unique, I'm not a runner, but I, I believe that that makes this event fairly unique, in that it's a competitive, uh, what is it, six, six K, five K? Uh, no, half marathon, thirteen and a half, thirteen point one miles run, so there are competitive runners that will, uh, come from all around and compete in this, but it's also a 5K walk, and that's for anybody in Wilmington, and that's really for us as Wilmington residents to rally together, so I really think there's so much win associated with this, and I'm really delighted that the Chamber of Commerce has, uh, taken this on and is championing it, so, uh, that's all I'll say, specific to that, and if we can get our arms around, uh, how we want to handle the money aspects for Nancy and for the board, that would be great.
You have comments?
Uh, I'm trying to think through, uh, the question about whether or not the board has any preferences in terms of where the money goes. I, on the one hand, um, when folks put together something like this, I, you know, I'm not so concerned about getting into those particulars as I am making sure that whatever they represent to the board, and that the general public understands to be the case, that they follow through and, and do it exactly that way. Um, on a, kind of an unrelated item, since there's a little bit of a change in management of the event, uh, just to make sure that, um, that the event organizers are in touch with the manager and the police department, et cetera, just to make sure there's a seamless, uh, you know, kind of, uh, transfer of, of supervision of the race, so, uh, I know that that should go without saying, but we won't just look to the cracks.
We do have a tight, we do have a tight, I mean, they, they have planned, historically planned this event for, you know, eight to nine months, so I am under the gun, and, um, but feel comfortable that I can get it done, with the help from my board, um, and with Tom. Tom and Laura O'Hearn, who did so much of the work, um, in the past five years, you know, they were at my house last Monday night till 11 o'clock, and, you know, we feel comfortable, I feel comfortable that I know all the details that are involved, um, and Tom is, you know, he's just so passionate about this, that, you know, you just want to do it for Tom, but, um, you know, he's already actually touched base with Lieutenant Desmond, and he's, you know, he has all the, we're, we have it done.
I mean, the only reason I brought that up is because it's Wilmington's 6th Annual, and there's new people running it now, that's the only reason I brought up, I know the scholarships have gone to Wilmington residents in the past, I just want to make sure that that stayed like that.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board, or motion?
Well, to, to that point also, we can talk about this further, Mr. Kyra, but, you know, in the past, I know that one of the scholarships was directly given to the town Scholarship Fund, so if that's something that we want to continue, and if that's how, you know, we make sure that it goes to a Wilmington resident, whether it not be a high school student or whatever, we can talk about that separately.
Very good. Questions, comments, motion? I make a motion that we grant the permission for Wilmington 6th Annual Half Marathon and 5K Run Walk, with the understanding with the DPW and the police's input.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, good luck.
Great, I hope to see you all there.
I'll do the walk. Okay, our 7:20 appointment with Carol Hamilton, directing of, Director of Planning and Conservation, discussion on the Form Based Code relative to the I-93 Tri-Town Development Project. Enter easel.
My easel. We'll see how this works, I don't know, I'm not very good with visual aids, no pointer, no laser thingy either. Um, thank you very much, and thank you for having me. Uh, as a number of you are aware, the public comment draft of the Form Based Code was, um, brought forward at a joint planning board meeting, uh, with the towns of Tewksbury, Andover, and Wilmington, was held here in, in the Wilmington Town Hall Auditorium. Um, I, it's beginning to stir some comment, although I recognize that it's a document that people will find some difficulty in getting their heads around, as it is very different from conventional zoning, so, I thought this evening I would try to just give you kind of a thumbnail sketch of what you will see when you start looking at the document, but also in how it is structured for use. Um, the Form Based Code draft is available on the town's website, um, I think it's even linked from the homepage, so you can go directly there. It is a fairly big file, um, so downloading it may take more than a minute or two. Um, as you may remember from previous visits, one of the things that we started with in this map were the constraints of the land that is under study out there, there are about 700 acres of land that are being looked at as part of this Form Based Code. Uh, I'm going to guess it's probably close to half and half on the, um, west side, which is currently inaccessible from Route 93 and from local roads, and probably about the same amount of land on the other side, the majority of that being in Andover, um, and available for, for reuse. Wilmington and Tewksbury land on this side of the highway, Route 93, this right here. So the first, we had two major constraints out there, the first being wetlands, those are identified in the, uh, medium green color, uh, you see a lot of green on this map, the yellowish-green denotes endangered species, areas of endangered species. Initially, the entire parcel was listed by natural heritage as home for, potential home of endangered species. Mass Highway has gone out and had hired someone to, to actually evaluate the whole area to see where those species actually are, and natural heritage in their next mapping will be showing a substantially smaller area. Um, the yellow-green in the upper-left corner under the Shawshene River, and another area of yellow-green around Procter and Gamble are the sites where the species have been found, as well as in the Shawshene River itself, there is a species of mussels, apparently, that are living in the Shawshene River. So the first look at this area that we had was really to figure out what land is available for development, and the, uh, the Wetland Protection Act defines how development can occur around wetlands. Those laws override our zoning, override anything else we might want to do. So that protection is built in, even though it may not specifically be stated in the, in the new zoning bylaw. The, um, there are some additional protections that have been built into the Form Based Code as well. In Andover, development along the Shawshene River is encouraged on an existing road, which is Lowell Junction Road, at the top of the map there. Um, rather than build additional roads going out toward the river, people are going to be encouraged to use the existing road and build close to the roadway, away from the wetland, away from the, uh, riverfront area. In Tewksbury, there's also been a setback established for, because these areas are predominantly commercial, uh, they, and a setback from residential areas, and there is a substantial, there are some substantial ones that, around the Tewksbury parcel, uh, an additional setback of 200 feet has been established in the Form Based Code to cushion residential areas from development. What you see here is much more typical of the zoning map that we're all used to, where available parcels are outlined in a particular color for a particular use. The Form Based Code, however, deals not so much with the use, that is a much, um, is much of, less of a consideration than, than other considerations. But on this map, we've laid out a number of what is called in the Form Based Code character districts. It does not eliminate the wetlands, it does not eliminate the endangered species, rules will be in place to protect those. So what you're seeing is a fairly large amount of land that can be rezoned for these character districts. In Wilmington, there are close to 395 acres of land that are in the study area. When you factor out the constraints, the land that is constrained, it comes down to really about 101 acres. Um, Tewksbury suffers even more, they have more land and less that's usable. The Rocco landfill has been removed from this project, too, there's no plan in Tewksbury right now for reuse of that land, so that is not being covered by the Form Based Code. These character districts will form, form the basis for the Form Based Code. In Wilmington, uh, the character, or the district is, is primarily purple, which is an employment district, it is, um, the uses allowed there are substantially commercial, uh, some retail, similar to our highway district now, there are restrictions on how much retail can be, you, can be included in development in this area. Um, office space, warehousing, light and heavy industrial uses are allowed in these areas, and the land available for use is roughly at the end of this pretend road, and here. Um, hotels, conference center are also uses that are allowed in this district. Basically, when a developer comes forward, in traditional zoning, um, he owns a parcel of land, and he comes forward to the planning board defining what he would like to do with that parcel. Under the Form Based Code, there's a requirement to establish a regulatory plan that includes more than the developer's parcel, so there is an investment on the part of an individual developer in planning for the use of his land, and how that use impacts and connects with surrounding land. So a layout of roads would be one of the first things that would determine how an individual's parcel can be used. In the employment centers, which are the ones that are available in Wilmington, there are a couple of types of, of roads, one is a primary carrier road, so it's called a boulevard, allows for a fairly substantial amount of traffic. When you get down toward the end of the districts, into the various parcels that might be developed, we're talking about a much smaller roadway, probably a right-of-way of about 50 feet, with pavement of about 24 feet, and this is the depiction of that interior roadway. The first thing the developer starts with is roadways, what's available form to use, and the building form itself. And in the district that we're talking about, there are a couple of types of buildings that, building forms that can be used. This is what's called a tech shop frontage, um, the other one is a flex space, um, you'll find them in the, in the code as well, but I asked to have a picture blown up, so you'd have an idea. These aren't meant to be, um, exact, um, determinations of what the building will look like, but give a general form of what the building should be in the particular area that we're looking at. So, a developer comes in, sees what character district he's in, looks at the street sizes that he has to work with, looks at the building forms that he can use, and there are some specifics about height, distance between buildings, um, how much distance there needs to be between entrances on the street, where the parking can occur, how close to a street the parking can be, um, a number of different pieces of a puzzle that the developer is going to have to put together in order to form his regulatory plan and come forward under site plan review. That's the final one here. That's the final one here. We have currently in the process of a comment period where folks in Wilmington and Andover and Tewksbury have been asked to provide comments on the draft Form Based Code. Those comments are being accepted by the planning director in each of the towns. We'll get together after the end of the comment period, look over what we've received, perhaps ask more questions of folks who have submitted comments, and then we'll sit with the consultants and, actually, we'll sit with the three planning boards yet again for another joint meeting where they can discuss the direction that they would like to give the consultant in response to the questions or comments that are made on the draft code. We're shooting for, we were shooting for a fall town meeting, that's not going to happen. We're recognizing that this is going to take more time to develop and to acquaint people with than a fall town meeting would allow. So right now, we're shooting for, for spring. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think this has been a great collaboration between the three, the three towns, and the boards, and the people that have met many, many times, as you know. The comment period, you want to just let people know how they can comment, make a comment, and when it ends?
Sure, it ends on July 20th. And comments can be directed to me either through the mail here at Town Hall, or my email address, which is chamilton@town.wilmington.ma.us.
And I would, I would just add, there is a article about this that appears in the Carnegie with Town Topics, which is already online, and it has that information that Carol just gave. And it'll also be in the mail with the tax bills by the end of this week, so if anybody's looking for that information. And I, and I believe the, your planning board will take the matter up on the 13th?
Yes, we'll be discussing the code at the meeting on, on July 13th.
People might be interested in what the planning board is thinking and might, might want to attend that meeting as well.
And people are also welcome to come by, and if I'm available, I'll certainly come out and talk to folks about any questions they have.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
I'd just like to say quickly that it was really nice to see the town hosted the last seminar here at the Town Hall, and it sounds like all the three towns are working together collectively. And I think at the end of the day, it's really nice to see that if we all support economic development in this area, especially in the Merrimack Valley area. And I do support, I've complimented you a couple of times on that, Carol, that it is going in a positive direction. And what's really important is citizens' input. And I'm kind of glad to see that we're putting off the special town meeting, because I think people out there still really need to know exactly what's going on and what kind of impact, especially if there's any traffic impact. And once, one more time, the caveat to this whole thing is keeping everything off the highway. And I would hope to think that's, and I've been saying it time and time again, I'm not alone, and I'm sure you feel the way, and many elected officials in all three communities feel that same way. We don't want to open up any avenue where residential roads are affected, you know, because then it affects their quality life forever. And it's kind of sad to hear that, that was going to maybe be the case in Tewksbury, but I'm glad to see they're back on track again and doing the right thing.
The, one of the things that we've had to take into consideration, too, is the impact on 93. So some of the restrictions that are built into the Form Based Code have to do with keeping the size of development on a given parcel small. We already are having a couple of complaints from stakeholders, landowners out there, that they're not, under the draft code, they're not allowed to do as much as they, as they thought they would like to do. And one of the problems is that you can't let the first developer in take all of the capacity of the highway. So the first developer that comes forward with a plan can't create millions of square feet of business in one spot and contribute all that the highway can handle. So we're, we've tried very hard to disperse this, so that won't happen. Excuse me.
Thank you.
I'm trying, and I haven't gotten to the, to the draft code, and I certainly will. I'm trying to bottom line the distinction between the Form Based Code and conventional zoning in my own mind, and to some extent, maybe that's helpful for other folks. And one of the things I keep playing over in my mind as I listen to you is that it, a prospective developer comes in under this code, it passes, and all three towns are on the same page. Developer comes in, under traditional zoning, they do a site plan, and the planning board's jurisdiction and other boards are limited in large part by that process. And what you're describing to me sounds like a site plan plus a, an area plan, a-
A super-site plan, right?
Super-site plan.
An area plan is also a good term.
Okay. And, and when a, the first one in does that, how does that affect the regulatory process for the other property owners? That part of the law that's going to be implemented?
Yes, they, they're required to follow that regulatory plan. So it encourages a developer, the first person in, to contact, and he would be required to anyway under notification laws, but would require him to be in touch with the folks who abut him and to consider their concerns. They have to buy into that regulatory plan, too. They're going to be at the public hearing, they're going to be commenting on it as well, and they're going to be bound by it in the future. So it really behooves a cooperative development. Now, I won't tell you that there aren't stakeholders out here that own enough land to have three and four regulatory plans on a, on their parcel of land. So it's not as complicated as, as you might think. It's not like going into a residential neighborhood and telling the neighbors they have to develop a regulatory plan in order to build a house. There are roughly, there are less than a dozen stakeholders out here that are, that own vacant land. So it's not as onerous as it might seem, but they, the regulatory plan that's approved by any one of the three planning boards is the regulatory plan that has to be followed, or they have to go through the public hearing process and change that plan, request a change to the plan.
Okay, so-
There is a possibility of changing it, yes.
Okay. And, and that, and that change isn't, doesn't take the path of changing the law, it, it takes the path of going through the planning departments?
It does. Once the regulatory plan is approved, development can occur without another, another site plan, without another public hearing. So as long as, once that regulatory plan is approved, it's going to approve what form the buildings take, what form the roads take, where the roads are located, where the parking is located. As long as developer two, within that regulatory plan, comes in and abides by the plan, there is an administrative process, depending on the size of development that's occurring there, that allows them to only go to the, to the staff of, of a particular planning board, once that big site plan is approved. So there'll be more opportunity for, for staff permitting than there is right now, but it's a bigger process to get that regulatory plan in place so that that can occur.
All right, I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you and certainly get a chance to get through the plan, too. Thank you.
Question, comments, Donna?
May I ask you to address, because I'm not sure I have a strong grasp, I've been trying to keep my eye on the ball on this issue as much as I can, however, it predates me or my involvement. What, what's the rationale, and maybe you already alluded to it, but I'll ask you to do so again, please. What was the rationale for adopting this process for this region as opposed to allowing for traditional zoning?
This is probably one of the few areas in the Commonwealth that's undeveloped, where there is real significant amounts of land that have not been developed. When you're dealing with traditional zoning, you're waiting for a developer to come forward and saying to, to a planning board, here's my plan, this is what I want to do out there. There is nothing in traditional zoning that requires you to think about where your road begins and ends so that it doesn't landlock your next-door neighbor. There's nothing in traditional zoning that requires you to think about what the buildings in a large area are going to look like, how they affect one another. And the Form Based Code allows you to do much more pre-planning than traditional zoning does. Instead of reacting to Target and a big box in a location, Target has to come in and think about what's left after he carves out his parcel for his box. And once that whole plan is adopted, then there is some buy-in from other folks to go forward with a, with that layout, with that plan.
So the tri-town organization, the three of us, have gotten on board and have agreed that the Form Based Code is a process we want to use for this region affected by the interchange. Are there communities out there that use Form Based Code for all of their zoning, for all of their construction?
Not, not in New England.
Not in New England?
Not in New England. There are in west, in the western part of the country, that's the general, generally accepted form of zoning.
Interesting.
But in New England, where we're so built, it's a lot harder. It's a lot harder to overlay on to existing development.
So it's really about pre-defining or creating a straw man or a, a guideline?
A sense of place is what we've been calling it. A sense of place.
Okay, I like that, yeah. A definition of place or a sense of place. Okay, thank you. I think that's, that's helpful for, I think certainly for me to envision why we're here and where we're going, and hopefully it's also helpful for those listening in. So thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? No? Any from the audience? Yep, Kevin, Mrs. McDonald?
Mrs. Hamilton, alluded to the Rocco dump being excluded from the site, and I think we all know that it's a super-fund site that's very heavily contaminated. And keeping in mind that part of our town is on town wells, particularly the Browns Crossing area, and living in that area and kind of being familiar with the area, a lot of the water flows from the other side of 93 into the wellfield area. And I'm just wondering to what extent testing has been done to identify in this site the contaminants that may have leached from the dump into this area, and what potential effect it's going to have on our water when utilities start getting dug, roads start getting dug, grades start getting changed, if this contamination is going to migrate into our wellfield and more wellfields are going to be shut down?
Yeah, that certainly would not be an outcome that anyone would, would be planning for. The Rocco's landfill, as you know, has been studied extensively. Tewksbury is under orders from EPA on the cleanup of that site and the capping of that site. There have been parcels in Wilmington that have been studied for development purposes that are, where, where there is potential for impact from, from the landfill. I know of one site in Wilmington where there, where there is some problem and some cleanup going on. I know of another site where there's been tests done and no problem has been unearthed. As part of the development process, before any bank will loan to a developer to put up his buildings, a 21E evaluation has to be done of that site. So that will be part of the development process as it is in any development.
My, my concern is this. Listening to her response in that the developer is going to be required to do a 21E, my personal opinion is that a 21E should be done before the developer even touches his property, before any road gets built, before any plan gets approved, before any Form Based Code goes forth. And it seems to me to start disturbing land or investing a lot of money into a site without specifically knowing the chemicals that are in the ground that could leach or migrate into our wellfield would be a logical thing to do. And I think the way you're approaching it is not in the best interests of the town.
The problem here is that we're dealing with private property, and we don't have rights to go on private property to do investigations of this nature. There may be folks out there who own land who prefer not to have that exploration done, and that is their right. It would also be incredibly costly, and I'm not sure really to what end or what advantage that would have for the town.
Well, it seems to me that we're bending over backwards to come up with all these Form Based Codes, have all these meetings requesting comments from people, and we're gonna, we're gonna subject ourselves to the developers hanging us over a barrel?
I don't think she's going to hang it, we're not talking about having anyone hung over a barrel or anything like that. You can disagree with the way things are going on. This, there's been many meetings on this, this whole tri, tri-town, I-93. There's one coming up July 13th, there's one here tonight, there was one, have you gone to any of the meetings that they've had in Andover and Tewksbury and Wilmington here?
To be perfectly honest with you-
Let, let me finish here, because you, just because you're standing up here saying you don't agree with the way this, this is going on is, is kind of out of line right here. You have a question, and she's trying to answer it for you, and this, like I said, there's been plenty of meetings, and there's going to be meetings. So if you have a specific question, which you did, I think she's answered it.
Well, I came to the board of selectmen meeting because I rely on you guys to sort of be the safeguard for the rest of us. And I would think that you guys would be very diligent about this particular issue, and instead of hearing the developer or hearing her say that we don't have the right to go on there, maybe what we should say to the developers is, listen, timeout, no more progress unless you agree to get some testing done there. And I think this board's responsibility is to protect the interest of the community.
I don't think, Mr.- I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mike, you mentioned- You know, any of the general points that Mr. McDonald just made, I don't necessarily disagree with. You know, yes, the board of selectmen is here to do what we can to make sure that the residents of Wilmington in their interests are protected. But that's a big leap to go from that general statement to the fact that somehow we have control of a private property as to when, when they do those kinds of testing. So when we talk about this, this proposed regulatory process, the process is supposed to do a number of things, not the least of which is to try and promote economic development that is palatable to the town and is, is in the best interest of the town, traffic-wise, tax-based-wise, all, all of those things. But at, at some point in the development, then a licensed site professional would have to give a report to the town and to other regulatory entities, DEP. They will do those, those tests as a matter of course. And I think that, that the point that Mrs. Hamilton made earlier, as a way of reassuring people about that, was to, to point out the fact that no bank is going to lend that money, no, no private developer is going to spend five, 10, $100 million on development without having the necessary onsite environmental testing done. It's just that in order to frame the regulatory process, to promote development in a way that makes sense for the town, this is the first step. And you had, I couldn't repeat all of the steps that you had referenced in your comments earlier, but you, you certainly mentioned the code-based, code-based form, you mentioned building streets, you mentioned building out the, the development in so many words. And I guess my point is, this first, once the stakeholders and property owners and potential developers understand the regulatory process under which they're proceeding, then as a matter of course, those various tests that you referenced certainly would be done, both at the behest of the town, but also if you don't, if you don't find that compelling, be assured that the private property owner is never going to invest millions of dollars without understanding what's underneath the ground. So, so I, I think, you know, it's really a question of when you do things, and we might as well create this framework for property owners to understand how they can possibly develop their property, as long as they meet all of those other requirements such as- their property as long as they meet all of those other requirements, such as the ones you talk about, that make sense in the abstract.
I would just go on.
There are a lot of regulatory issues that anyone, any private property owner has to follow in order to develop land. And a lot of it can't be done before you know what the person is thinking about doing on the property.
I just was going to add that, you know, there is an extensive NEPA and MEPA process that is going on. And having attended meetings now for three years on this whole project, I can assure you that the environment has probably been point one of the discussion. When Carol referenced the stakeholders, and we're talking about the form-based code here tonight, not the overall project, but the stakeholders are people like the Audubon Society and the various conservation commissions that have been a part of this, and other groups whose names I don't recall at the moment. But hundreds of thousands of dollars is being dedicated to environmental issues, you know, from identifying and saving the mussels to more larger environmental issues of interest. And certainly, if there's going to be any kind of an infrastructure project that goes forward, and we hope that there is, all of that is going to have to meet every environmental review. And I can assure you that we're going to be diligent in protecting all of Wilmington's resources, and if that entails the kinds of testing that you're talking about, then that testing will be done. It'll be that simple. I agree that you make a very valid point, but those things are going to be a part of this process. And what Mrs. Hamilton is here about is the form-based code, which is not about the actual shovel on the ground yet, but when we get to that point, all of that will be regulated.
The NEPA, NEPA process too is asking the Mass Highway to take a look at salt and how that's used so that there isn't additional degradation of the water quality out there. Water quality certificates have to be obtained. Army Corps of Engineers and all of the environmental folks that you could possibly think of are currently meeting on the NEPA process on a monthly basis to actually determine what the scope of the environmental review will be for this project, for the highway project. And that's just the tip of the iceberg as far as studies go. Not only do you have to meet, deal with NEPA and NEPA for the highway construction, but in order to develop on these parcels, another NEPA process will have to be engaged in by each of those developers. So this is just the very beginning.
Mr. Lindnerfeld?
I feel like it adds a sense that might just help ease everyone's minds about the issues that were raised. All of these programs are regulated by overlapping regulatory programs. Each one of those programs is going to have to be regulated, and it requires delineation to the full plume to the extent, and they have to be, they mesh together. And the more accurate point or places for Mr. McDonald to bring his complaint is to the individual meetings held, like such as folks who were some site for Rocco's, they would ensure that they are adequately delineating, send it to plume, or other Massachusetts regulated programs that may or may not occur, I have to admit, not having complete knowledge of the area. But his concerns are valid, but they should be directed at the appropriate meetings and times for the specific causes. This is one of the three legs of the project, this development, from the financial development aspect. And then there are, like you said, the federal programs and the state programs, and selection of the state program, a program, a contamination problem could be deemed adequately regulated because the federal government is handling that, and you know, vice versa. So while his concerns are valid, this is not the correct forum, and should direct his specific attentions to the individual meetings, to the individual problems, and then just be aware overall of the, you know, potential risks to our environment from our water, what's going on here. Your point was that this isn't the avenue for the specific problems, just to remind us to be generally concerned. That helps? I don't know if that helps.
Yep, very good.
I just want to reiterate my position that I'm relying on the board to request well drill reports and that sort of thing. And I personally believe that this board has the duty to protect the citizens and...
I think we've done that, Mr. McDonald, I think you made your point.
Just with regard to this particular issue, that I think that this is the time to hold the other people over the barrel rather than being held over the barrel myself.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, our 7:35 appointment, running a little late, is with Donald Lornesite, DPW Superintendent for memorandum of understanding with the Town of North Reading, reason of Route 62, Salem Street at Martins Brook Culvert Rehabilitation Project. Good evening, Mr. Lornesite.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You should have a memorandum of package that includes a draft memorandum of understanding. And what we're, what the Department of Public Works is proposing is a draft memorandum of standing, memorandum of understanding between the towns of North Reading and Wilmington so that we can go forward and construct and reconstruct the Route 62 culvert for Martins Brook. The Route 62 culvert is located just west of Shea Concrete on Route 62. It's a fairly old culvert that's in some state of disrepair. We've recognized it for some time as being one of the important items on our infrastructure improvement program for the town's drainage system. In 2004, there was a drainage study that was conducted by the Army Corps of Engineers that indicated that culvert was undersized for the Martins Brook, and because of that was causing some flooding problems for the Martins Brook area, and also the area that's tributary into Martins Brook, and it would be the Browns Crossing Treatment Plan as well. Through FEMA, we've been tentatively awarded, along with North Reading, a $480,000 grant to do the project. North Reading has come forward and is proposing and has offered to provide the entire cost of the local share, which is about $270,000, for a total cost of $750,000. We'd like to proceed with the project. We feel this has advantages for Wilmington. As I mentioned, the culvert is old, has many deficiencies, and we'd like to get that culvert replaced. The flooding impacts not just North Reading, but also Wilmington would be alleviated with the project. Some of the concerns that we have on the project, which will have to be addressed during the permitting and during the design, would include the traffic impacts when the construction is undertaken. Some of the options that we will look at would be two-way traffic, one-way traffic, and potentially the closing of Route 62 for the duration of the main portion of the construction, which would be about a week. One of the major concerns which still needs to be addressed would be during the permitting phase, the Wilmington Conservation Commission has indicated that they have some real concerns about expanding the culvert and what that would do to the folks downstream on Martins Brook as it flows into the Ipswich River. But we feel that, you know, we have safeguards in place with our draft memorandum of understanding, and we're recommending the approval of that memorandum of understanding. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I know that you've worked hard, worked hard on this project with the town manager, and I think it's, I know that it will affect Wilmington as well as North Reading, but I think a lot of it is in North Reading, and for them to pick up their, the full share of that is a testament to the hard work that you and the town manager put into this. Any other questions or comments?
I don't have any technical questions, but I believe that, you know, you're on the right track, you know what you're doing, and it's going to help the town of Wilmington to a small degree or even to a large degree. I think it's definitely something that we need to rally around and go forward with it. Thank you.
With the approval of this, when do you think the work would actually start to, you know, get underway on 62?
The permitting, I believe, will take some time. Wilmington Conservation Commission will have to approve this, and also the Army Corps of Engineers will have to approve it. So I don't anticipate that we'll begin any construction until next season.
Next season?
Yes.
Reason why, it's a, you know, frequent travel route, especially with the two gravel pits right up the street, and, you know, I was just curious to see when that operation, you know, would start, because you probably would have to close one side and then the other side to allow all that traffic physically to go through while the work is, you know, and the road's only so width is tight. That's why. Okay.
No question will be a huge impact to traffic to close that stretch of 62 there. Although it will be short duration, it still will be a big impact.
Would the road be kept open, like, will it be detoured, you think, at that time, or parts of it?
One of the options that we're looking at, which will shorten the construction duration, would be to close the road. It will allow us to proceed a lot quicker. We'll have to have a very well-publicized detour route. Both North Reading and Wilmington will have to take part in that. Police and fire on both communities will have to be heavily involved.
Be well-advertised as far as, like, if you do decide to shut it down for a certain period of time, you know, a lot of notices probably would go out with, you know, notice both Wilmington and North Reading, probably?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, as I was reading through it, the first thing that jumped to my head was, boy, if they make this thing bigger, there's going to be a lot more water going downstream. And then I got to that section in the project issue, so glad to see it was addressed. Specifically, you write, "The town will not allow an increase in downstream flows above what can be handled by Martins Brook without adversely impacting these neighborhoods." And these are neighborhoods, you would look higher, Circle, Hathaway Acres, et cetera. I'm just curious, and maybe the answer isn't known, but what is the process for determining how much those areas can handle for downstream water flow? In other words, if this thing does open up? I had this vision of a beaver dam being removed, and then the water coming through and taking out plants and things, and obviously, we're not talking about that kind of immense flow, but is there a process that you're aware of, or can you talk to that specific issue of how we handle now an increased ability for water to get downstream during a flood situation?
During the design and permitting phase, there'd be a hydrogeological study that would look at that channel all the way, even past the Ipswich River. Martins Brook flows, as probably most of you know, from Martins Pond in North Reading through the Benevento, Heffron sites, under Route 62, then it circles back to the east through North Reading. So it would not just be Wilmington that would be affected if too much water was released with the expansion of the culvert, it would also be North Reading. And then it flows, you know, to the Ipswich River, just to the west of the Ipswich River Park in North Reading. There it joins with the Ipswich River.
Great. You all settled?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Any other comments?
Just one minor item that, just a question that comes to mind. One of the things Wilmington has agreed to do is to participate in public meetings on the project, and I was just curious, I assume that means through the permitting process, that there's not other public areas that the board should anticipate being involved in, or is that something you should anticipate?
The assumption there, Mike, was that would be through the permitting process.
Yeah, I think you've answered questions along the lines of anything else I had to offer, so.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, Donald Lornesite could explain the actual problem areas, where they are, who it's impacting. And we know that this spillway has been there for a lot of years, and the water that's coming through there is also coming from our well field area. And I'm concerned, and I think Mr. Shump who made a valid point about having too much water flowing through, that not so much impacting other people down there, but impacting our well field in a negative way. And I was wondering if you could tell us, who's being negatively impacted now, what the problems are, and why this has gone forth?
The problems right now are flooding primarily in the Martins Pond area of North Reading, but also the Browns Crossing area is flooded. In 2006, we had approximately $100,000 worth of damage to the plan of Browns Crossing because of flooding. This last flood in, this spring wasn't quite so bad, but we've had it in the past. And that is all up gradient of the culvert, and is part of the watershed of Martins Brook. So if this is done properly and correctly, that should alleviate that flooding. It's not going to take, I mean, there's still going to be flooding there, it's not going to take it away, but it will reduce the frequency and the impact of the flooding, not only in Martins Pond, but also in Wilmington, in the Browns Crossing area. And we certainly would not do anything that would be, would have an adverse impact on our well field.
One other thing that's always been disturbing to me, especially after seeing the gas truck that flipped over on 93 and the fuel that went into the North Reading, I think it was the Reading water supply, and took that well field out. Do you have any plans on putting any kind of burns so that if there's a truck rollover, we don't lose our wells because of contamination like what happened to Reading on Route 93?
That, I mean, during the permitting and design, we certainly look at that as probably going to be beyond the scope of this project, but that is down gradient from the well field. So even if there was a spill there on Route 62, the contamination would flow downstream and not affect the wells at Browns Crossing. It would affect North Reading, and North Reading has a plant down gradient.
Would you consider proposing something like that?
But that's the case today, and with all, you know, Kevin, all the trucks that travel on Route 62, and...
That's why my concern arose, because I see the amount of trucks down there and the entrance and exit from Heffron and from Shea. It would be very easy for a truck to rollover, avoiding somebody pulling out.
Well, I don't know how easy it would be, but it certainly is possible. And if there's some way that we can address that, you know, we'd obviously like to do that.
That it appears.
Mr. Chairman, and I'll stand corrected by Don, but I think at this point, rather than asking the board to sign the memorandum of understanding, since it has not, we've made some changes to it, it's not gone back to North Reading. If the board would consider a motion to authorize the town to move forward and now provide this as this draft to North Reading for their review, and then pending that discussion, how that goes, we could come back to the board with a, asking for a final sign-off. So if the board would consider a motion to authorize the public works director, public works superintendent to provide a copy of the memorandum to the Town of North Reading, with an indication that the Town of Wilmington supports this.
I'd make a motion as described by the town manager relative to the subject tonight.
I'll second.
Motion made and second, all in favor? unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess you could stay right there. The 7:45 with Donald Lornesite, the DPW Superintendent, and Michael R. Begonas, police chief, for discussion relative to traffic problems at Route 62 and 38 intersection, and other traffic issues of concern to the Board of Selectmen. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
A few meetings ago, Selectman McCoy had mentioned some issues with traffic issues, particularly up in front of the post office, 62 and 38. So I don't know if you wanted to start, if you had something to say that you've gone through, or did you want to start? Any questions?
I mean, no, I think the bottom line is, I know the police do a good job, we have a safety officer, and obviously, many, many years ago, I remember supporting on town meeting floor that we do have a traffic division, and I know we're doing what we can. I mean, as time goes on, progress happens, and it does come with a price. And obviously, in the town, there is traffic. And I'm sure, you know, Tewksbury and Groveland and down Hyannis, you know, when there's expansion, traffic comes with that. And I understand that, and I accept that. But obviously, if there's ways of trying to alleviate some of the problems that we have, for example, living in the town most of my life... have, for example, living in the town most of my life, I mean, I know the biggest concern, I think we need to spend a lot of time, is signalization. We need to monitor signalization in this community. For example, if I'm coming, say, out McDonald's and take a left, not Sonic, out McDonald's and take a left, okay? Uh, there's a, uh, and you come to the set of lights, you cannot take a left to the plaza. There's not a, yep, a green arrow, so you can go in the plaza. So now you gotta fight two lanes of traffic. And what happens is now you got people behind you. Now they're honking the horn and they wanna go around. And these are small things, uh, to take a look at. And, for example, like, owning a business for many, many years on Lowell Street, now they put signalization down there at Route thirty-eight and one twenty-nine, traffic does start to back up quite further along Lowell Street than it had prior to a traffic light. So I'd imagine the right arrow, we need to expand some time. These are small things that I think, at the end of the day, will be very helpful. And I'll touch upon Wilmington Center by the post office in a little later. But I just wanted to bring that back, and it's not, I mean, you know, we can't look in the crystal ball and say, well, jeez, this is gonna happen. I understand that, I respect that, but if we can try to help solve some of the problems in town, maybe get people from here to there. And another quick example, within the last, say, four or five years, there's more signalizations around, along Main Street. Ten, fifteen years ago, we had three sets of lights. Silver Lake, uh, we had one down where, it used to be, uh, McNamara Ty, which is Rite Aid now, set of lights, and Wilmington Center, there's three. In the last four or five years, even less than that. Given the last two years, there's another, a total of seven lights, there's four more intersections, four more lights. And that's becoming, we're trying, all we're doing is really moving traffic quickly from point A to point B, and it stops. I mean, it does help out to a certain degree, but then it backs up. I mean, I know this is something we have to deal with, but if there's something that we can at least try to help a little bit and just explore, you know, and I'm all ears.
Right, thinking, Mike, um, the Wilmington Police Department is certainly keen to the issues of traffic down those corridors, one twenty-nine and thirty-eight. Um, we spend a lot of time out there observing Officer Moon. I, I must send him out, uh, once every other week to take a look at an intersection or, or, or an issue or signage and, and try to get that tweaked. Um, a, a lot of that is, is an engineering issue because of the density of the area and the, and the, and the use and the traffic that goes up and down that street now. I think we, we have over forty thousand vehicles pass through the center on an average day now. Substantial amount of traffic. Um, the issue is, is, you know, that, that's pretty well-developed on Route thirty-eight and one twenty-nine, but the feeder roads are small country roads. And so we do get a lot of backup, I agree. Um, and it's issues that we, we are aware of, and we try to, to mitigate as best we can. But, um, as far as the signaling and the time of the signaling, we, we at the Police Department rely on the engineers, basically, to go out and do their traffic studies and, and then come out and try to tweak those and adjust them. And it's, it is a constant, constant battle. Um, but we have to be aware of every, every area that we tweak and we change, it impacts one of the other lights down cycle. And, and so it's, it's, it's a difficult process, and it's a, it's a work in process, we're always at it.
I think, though, that last week, um, I know Dawn had arranged for someone to move from the Mass Department of Transportation, and they met with Dawn and the chief and, uh, Safety Officer Moon. And, uh, the specific discussion was about that Route thirty-eight, sixty-two intersection, which is, which is something that I know you've brought up and something that we've been getting more and more complaints on, uh, lately here at, at Town Hall. And, and maybe Dawn can speak to the results of that meeting, because we believe that there, we may have found a problem that the Department of Transportation is willing to, uh, address, which is unusual.
I mean, that, that intersection has, has been a problem, uh, for, for decades, and it, it's, it's just a, a overcapacity. Uh, during peak hours, it's a failing level of service and probably always will be, uh, a failing level of service, just too much traffic trying to get through that intersection. But lately, it seems like it's, uh, been going downhill, and we've seen it primarily, uh, when the down Easter comes through, and they have that preemption that shuts down, uh, portions of that intersection. And, uh, you know, we wanted to meet with, uh, that is a Mass Highway or Mass DOT now, uh, intersections. We wanted to meet with their traffic engineers to go through the, the phasing to make sure that it's, it's functioning as it was designed to function. And what we discovered when we met and did a little bit of research is it's, uh, the phasing really isn't working the way it's supposed to. There's supposed to be a sequence of, uh, clearing movements, you know, once the railroad preemption, uh, begins to shut that intersection down. And right now, only one of the three movements is operating. So you, you don't have any clearing of Route thirty-eight heading southbound, uh, you don't have any clearing of Route sixty-two heading westbound, you only have the clearing of the Route sixty-two heading eastbound. So Mass Highway or, or DOT is aware of that now and is, is, uh, working to, uh, correct that. They're not really sure how that happened, you know, why that, uh, you know, went into that, that single phase, which is not what it's supposed to do. And we should have that corrected surely, and that, that, that will help, uh, somewhat, but certainly not gonna, uh, be steady flow of traffic through there.
Tim is the chairman, used to bring up the traffic about that area. I mean, lived in this community for fifty years, own a business, and obviously have here a lot of folks, and you hear a lot of things going on in town. And I know I brought this up before, and I was hoping that maybe that we could at least look at the issue, if you're coming out of the Police Department, you wanna take a right to Wilmington Center. One big problem is right in front of the post office, it bottlenecks, then it opens up. And I'll admit, and I'll admit, even myself, and I shouldn't say it, I've crossed the line to go around, as other folks have done, to take a left-hand turn. I really believe if we can figure out a way, cosmetically, to change, we're gonna have to work with the post office to take those, uh, tho- those huge blue mailboxes and move them to the side somehow, and maybe take four or five feet of the sidewalk and move it over. I think we're gonna, it would help to a certain degree to at least have the traffic move a little quicker, especially if you wanna take a left-hand turn. That is one of the, I mean, I don't have to explain to you, you guys know what you're doing, there's no question. And I'm just trying to, hopefully, if, if there's a problem, how can we solve a little bit of a problem? Because traffic is becoming an issue in this community, and it's throughout the state and throughout the country, and I, we know that. But if we can solve a little issue here, I think it's gonna help out. And I'll say it, I think we really need to take a look at some, either work with the abudders that own the property, move the sidewalk over and expand that area five, six feet. I think you're gonna see the two lanes constantly going and going, and I think that's gonna help out a little bit. But that's something we need to look at, and I need the professionals to really do the schematic to see if it can be done.
Mr. McDonald.
Chief and Dawn, I noticed, um, especially driving truck all the time during the height of congestion, is, um, when you're going, say, towards the center, um, from, from that intersection's backed up, you know, quite a bit, I notice when that, when that light, it'll go and allows, uh, a bunch of cars, if they're on top of each other, go through the center of that light. But if, if that truck, um, say, you know, can move slow, or you got a car that's delayed, say, one length, that light changes two cars. And I was wondering if, you know, if that sensor could be a delayed sensor, because, you know, like I said, if a truck has got a ten-speed and it's got weight in it and you can't, you know, even though it's, it's the third vehicle, uh, those two go through, right off the bat, that light changes. Peak hours, five o'clock in the day, which means it's causing a delay backwards to a law in the intersection of Main Street. I see that, um, especially in the last month, big problem on that. I've seen, um, you know, cars, they, you know, be on the phone or whatever in front of, in front of me, and they delay that one space, and that light will instantly change. Um, you, you know, I wouldn't go twenty feet, peak hour stopped. And I have to wait for that hole, um, from the Burlington Ave side come through, go right, and watch that whole, um, light change and go straight across. That whole delay, it affects only three cars of travel, which is backing up. So I think if you look into that delay, uh, sensor, I, I think, yeah, during peak hours, I think that, that will distribute some of that traffic better. That's my own experience. I've been paying attention to that for the last month.
We, we can ask Mass Highway to do that. Those are the new, uh, TV camera sensors that are quite, uh...
I mean, try with a vehicle and just delay yourself, and I guarantee you that light will change.
There is supposed to be a time delay, so there's a time that it stays green, and then if the intersection clears, then the sensor will pick that up and, and begin the next cycle. But maybe it's not functioning that, that way.
I definitely think that's because I've been, um, the last couple of weeks, it's just like that, it's instant. And I'm like saying, there has to be a sensor in there. And, uh, you know, and it's right at peak hours, too, it's doing it.
I, you know, I find, my observations and the officers that work for me have noticed that, that it's not unequal. The backup was fairly equal on all four directions. So, I mean, it, it is something that they could probably work with a little bit, but I, I just think that the, the volume of traffic going through that intersection is the issue, you know, with people all wanting to take lefts and rights at the same time. It just, it can only allow so many cars to go through, Ray, and, you know. Certainly something we can ask them to look at. We've had, on multiple occasions, get them out there, and we've done some timing ourselves. And, and when it's grossly negligent, we make a phone call and get them come out to, try to, try to fix it, but, uh...
Unfortunately, with the height, I've looked at it, my own ideas would have been years and years ago, noticing it goes up and you're clearing the bridge and going over the track. If they reduced that, instead of going up and, and going over to Burlington Ave, they kept it at the, the railroad bed level, made a big rotary there, I, I think, you know, now we wouldn't be feeling it, the impact as much today. And unfortunately, they built the center up for that grade and cross over the track with a bridge. Unfortunately, now, that would, would, you know, single lanes all the way to, you know, Route thirty-eight going towards Tuxbury or, um, single lanes going down towards, um, the Shell Station, I mean, that's, you have to depend on the lights now, I don't think there's any other answer. And take land today, um, land taken would be huge, the cost of the state to, um, develop two lanes such as Tuxbury. I think, um, you know, we're, we're by that part of it.
It did seem simpler, Ray, when they had the old traffic booth in the square where the officers stood inside the little hut and pulled traffic. I know if you go back to those days...
Yeah.
Progress with a price.
And then he couldn't push the, uh, that, that box down the hill to get it off after he's done at four in the afternoon, so I wouldn't have to park the car and give him a pain pushing the, uh, off the island. Oh, yeah, I remember those days.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
If I may. Chief, I think you already alluded to, what is the sort of standard operating procedure or what is the process for you engaging the help of the, the, was it the contractors or the, the consultants that you, that you rely on to sort of measure this data, do the traffic analysis, and make a rec, either a recommendation or, uh, put the phasing in place? Is it, do you initiate that call when you, when you see a problem, or is there an ongoing tweaking of the phasing, or how does that process work, I guess?
Typically, we work with the DPW on, on all those issues. Um, we get phone calls and somebody will call and, and say, say, it's a delayed taking left-hand turn heading, um, westbound on sixty-two, and we'll go up and we'll observe the traffic situation to see if it, if we can replicate it. And if we observe a replica, 'cause, you know, glitches happen. Sometimes things just don't work right, and like Ray, when you're coming up with your truck, you don't get through the light. So we'll go up and we'll observe the intersection. If we see that it's a, it's a, a, a problem that we can replicate, then we'll make a phone call to Mass Highway, and they usually come out. They, they're pretty responsive to our requests. Um, but this situation here, like, you know, um, I think it kind of impacted the entire intersection, all directions. So it wasn't something you got identified, it's just westbound sixty-two up through the square. It was, you know, I observed the cars backed up past Chestnut Street on the other side and vice versa down towards, um, you know, where, where the intersection of, of one twenty-nine and Main Street, with that new, new intersection there is the Shell Station. That's queued back as fire, and, and, and so it, it is something that we, like I said, it's a work in progress. We try to monitor as best we can, respond to complaints we have up there. Um, as far as the actual getting inside the box and tweaking that, we leave that to the engineers, we just make our complaints and...
Let them fix it.
Do the best we can. It's, it's a little above our pay grade.
If we can, I don't know if you're ready to wrap it up or blow the audience, but I would like to hopefully get a consensus here, maybe for the next couple of meetings. If we could ask the town manager, what kind of power does the Board of Selectmen have, or what is the process that we would need to do? My concern right now, and I said it before, along the post office up about a couple of hundred feet to the right-hand side, I'm not saying, I mean, ultimately eminent domain, but I'm not saying going on that route. Is there something that we can do as a board, or what authority we have to expand that five, six feet? Unfortunately, I would have to say we can't have people park there anymore to dump the mail in the mailboxes, they're gonna have to relocate that, maybe on the property. I'm not saying we can do it, but I'd like to know what authority we have as a board pertaining to this. I think we do have a lot of power and authority because it's our own street, you know, but I would like, you know, maybe we need to ask town council, or what is the process in actually doing it, and then if it's a support of the board or not a support, we need to, just, we need to really look at it, because I think it's time we really need to address that, just that one hundred and fifty, two hundred feet of property of that line, and I think we're gonna make a, a somewhat of a difference of moving the traffic a little bit more smoother. And, uh, I'm all for getting rid of the mailboxes and taking that sidewalk over five, six feet and putting, uh, two lanes right there to move the traffic. I'm all for it.
I can, I can certainly...
No, no, but I just need, I know there's a process, and we need to do it right.
I can check that.
You know, we, I'm not gonna shoot from the hip, but I know...
I guess, my question is, is this, is the board in favor of removing the parking in front of the post office? I guess I need to understand, I, I can certainly check on this, but I, I think the bigger question is, there are, as you well know, um, hundreds of people who use that to stop because the post office parking lot is so small, and it just can't handle the volume. And I, I don't know whether or not that would create a larger problem if we remove the, um, the parking in front of the post office. So I, I guess we should probably address that as...
I, I, and I agree, Mike, I think that's a major concern, but I think maybe if we can talk to the post office, maybe there's a certain, a couple of parking stalls that they could designate for that actual drop-off for people to actually go in. I mean, I know parking's tight no matter where you go, but I just think it's a big concern in that area. I'm not saying it's a safety issue, but I think you, people are very, gotta be very careful opening up that door, the traffic at four, five o'clock, they're dumping the mail. It's a dangerous area, especially if you're parking at that during peak times. Maybe what we could do is, not jumping the, shooting from the hip at this moment, but maybe if we can contact the postmaster and see, is there a possibility that the town is interested in not saying we are moving the boxes? If there's a possibility of doing it, to ease the flow of traffic in this whole community as a whole? Is there an area they could designate on the grounds for those mailboxes so specifically people can pull in and pull out of it? You know? I mean, I don't know, I don't have the magic answer for the post office. Maybe they would be very creative, and maybe it'd work out for everybody.
Any comments?
I think the mailboxes that he's referring to are on the post office land, because you do have to head towards the front doors to deposit mail. I think what he's referring to is those old, um...
On the street.
Paper dispensers, there are that, that...
Newspapers.
Yeah, newspaper dispensers that are on the street.
The manager's right. Folks, and I, I mean, living in this town all my life, folks do park there, get out, throw the mail, and they go back on the street. And he's right, it's probably hundreds of times a day, maybe you gotta, some people aren't gonna be happy about it, but I'm looking at it as a community as a whole, you know, trying to move the traffic, trying to get people from destination to A and B, making life easier for, less accidents for, uh, law enforcement, and hopefully, uh, traffic is, is, as a, as a whole, trying to help people's quality of life somehow, if there's a way of doing it. If we can try to just explore it, not saying, I wouldn't do that to the membership and put a motion to do that tonight, I wouldn't do that. I would like to hopefully explore it, and then if there's a possibility of doing it, then we can do that. As a full body.
Mr. Chairman, um, one of, a couple of things that I'm hoping come out of tonight, one of them is to find out what effect the changes that, uh, the DPW super and the police chief have described, that, uh, they brought DOT into the loop. Um, just, Mr. McCoy's having brought this, uh, issue up again and revisited it and had these gentlemen look into it. I, I'm curious as to what effect that will have. Then I'm curious as to what effect, if any, uh, an engineer would say that removing those parking spaces and moving those mailboxes, is there any reconfiguration of that front edge on the post office, whether or not that would have any effect? If so, what that effect would likely be? And then I'd be curious to know, based on that, what is the board's jurisdiction to try and effectuate that outcome? So I guess, without drawing a conclusion as to whether or not I favor it, to me, the first step is finding out what effect the changes that appear to be forthcoming are gonna have. And, and then let's, then let's, uh, take another look at this. And to that end, you, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I thought you said something to the effect, pretty soon, what, what are we looking at in terms of DOT making the changes to the signalization and the clearing process that you described? Uh, a week, a month, a year, what do, what do we think?
Well, unless there's a, uh, some type of, uh, equipment problem that's causing
Well, unless there's a, uh, some type of, uh, equipment problem that's causing this that, you know, requires a little bit more work than I think, it, it should be just a matter of, uh, days.
Okay.
I'm, I'm anticipating that this week, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get an adjustment.
Okay, so I, I'm wondering if, uh, let's assume for the sake of discussion that, that happens in the next couple of weeks. Uh, throughout the rest of the summer, if we can continue to take a look at this and if there's not a noticeable improvement, then maybe we go on to the next thing that says, is there a benefit from an engineering standpoint to make any changes at, on, at or about the post office address? And, and then go from there. Does that make sense?
I believe it does. And I think during the cer, the peak hours when the nor'easter comes through, I, I can understand what you're saying where everything should be cleared from here back because that's the way the timing lights were supposed to be and that's not happening. I think that's good, that could alone, just the few times that the, uh, train goes through, that may make a big difference, especially at peak hours, obviously.
Anything else on the board here?
Yeah, no, I'm, uh.
I'm not at all opposed to what Mr. McCoy suggested. I, I guess, taking a careful, uh, steady approach towards evaluating what our options are so that we don't fix one problem and create another, I guess. But if in fact, we find ourselves needing the, uh, the advice of or the analysis of an engineer to look at that frontage in front of the, the post office and determine how to use that space most effectively and maybe, uh, you know, negotiate with the post office or whomever the, the landowners are there, um, then we go forward in that, that regard. But, uh, again, I think the, the process needs to be sort of slowed down or, or i- in a way that, um, takes it in the sequences that we've just described. And I, I like the idea of, of going through the summer, so I'm glad, uh, you, we guys, we talked about it this way.
Very good. Mr. McDonald, you have any concerns on this?
Mr. McCoy mentioned that it's our street and I could be wrong, but I always thought it was a state highway, Route 62. So I just wanted to bring that up. Um, with regard to the light sequencing, it's relatively new equipment. I would have thought that it would have been high-tech equipment. It seems to me that the people that provide that equipment and install that equipment should be fixing their problem, um, but maybe it's not high-tech equipment that's, uh, technologically advanced to do what we need to do, timing, signaling, so that it changes at different times of the day. But I did wanna bring up, uh, one location in our state that I'm pretty familiar with. And that is when you're coming from the airport, heading to Riviere down 1A, and there's an intersection going to Orient Heights at East Boston. There's a signaling device box where a police officer can plug in a device and when he sees that traffic getting backed up, he can operate that device and turn that light on to green. And if somebody might wanna take a ride down there and, he's down there quite often doing that, um, so it might be something to look into, that's all.
Is that a gentleman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don, you, you can, your excuse, but the chief has to stay. And our Rita Clark appointment is, uh, with Michael Arbagonis, the police chief, uh, to discuss the law enforcement challenge program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, thank you to the Board of Selectmen, um, for taking this opportunity out of a, of what appears to be a very busy agenda to recognize the efforts of, of, uh, basically my entire department, but specifically, um, more towards the, uh, hard work of these fine four gentlemen. Three years ago, we began the process of, um, engaging in the law enforcement challenge that is run by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Security and Safety. And, um, basically what it is, is an assessment of our overall traffic plan, our comprehensive traffic plan that the police department has to ensure the, um, safety of, of the community. And, um, I challenged the four officers here. I come in when I learned about the program. Roughly 20 to 25 departments throughout the state, um, take a role in it. And I, and I said, look, and I'd, I'd really like to be able to move forward with this, take what we do, because we do a great job, um, with, with our traffic plan and, um, document it and, and enter into this, into this challenge. The first year, which was, uh, 2007, they did a great job. It was our first shot at it. We, uh, we, we won an award through the state, the bronze award. Uh, last year, we resubmitted in, uh, the 2008 traffic plan that we had and we moved up one level to the silver. And this year, I'm happy to say that the officers did a, a remarkable job in presenting their package to the state and we've moved up to the gold, um, which is, uh, you know, a testament to the hard work, not only of these officers, but every officer in, in, in the department. So I thought I would, uh, take the opportunity to come down and, and, and discuss a little bit about what the challenge was all about, the dimensions that we had to present to them, um, and, uh, entertain any questions you might have. And it, basically, the, the package requires us to assess and document the actions that we take in, in several different dimensions. First, it's the, uh, policy and guidelines area. Um, there's a training of officers, uh, incentives and recognition of officers and, and the public, uh, public information and education and, uh, um, enforcement and effectiveness. So when we look at that, it makes us better at what we do every year. And I, and I think that in the past three years, we've, you know, prior to that, we did a great job, but we're really doing a phenomenal job now as far as our traffic safety program. So, um, policy and guidelines, we recently, uh, um, were awarded state certification for our policies and procedures, uh, which is a, a, a great feat for the police department. That's just, uh, looking at our policies and procedures and making them contemporary to laws and, and what best works and best practices in police work. Part of that was looking at our overall traffic safety plan, how we issue tickets, how we do OUI enforcements, how we do, um, uh, seatbelt enforcements. And so upon that review, we redo our policies and procedures and those are submitted to the state for a review and evaluation. Training of officers, we do regular training on LIDAR, radar, um, seatbelt safety, um, issues like that to try to keep the men and women abreast of, of, of the new technologies that are out there to, you know, assess what traffic movement is like in, in the town. The initiatives, incentives and recognition, um, we've recently recognized Officer Rooney for making the most OUI arrests in the town through a program with MAD, Mothers Against Drug Drivers. Um, we've recognized, uh, Officer Patterson for writing the most, uh, speed citations and Officer Alpis for writing the most seatbelt violations. So we try to recognize these individuals that go out and go above and beyond and, and really focus on certain areas of traffic, uh, traffic enforcement. I think where we do a phenomenal job is in public education and, and, and information. And I, I think that, uh, Brian Herman, Brian Moon and Brian Gillis really go above and beyond with a lot of their programs. Brian Herman's, uh, has worked with SAD in the last year, um, to identify compliance checks, uh, having to do with seatbelt usage. And he goes out with the, the kids that are involved in SAD and they did three checks this year. Um, and, and they found that, um, 60% of roughly 200 drivers, um, were wearing seatbelts, which is a concern. I mean, the state and the federal government certainly wants us to get that usage up. 75% of, uh, out of 125 passengers, high school age kids were wearing their seatbelts. And, uh, and last, the 75% of 20 backseat drivers were wearing a seatbelt. So, um, once we do those observations, we do other programs where Brian Moon will, um, get, uh, chicken sandwiches from Chick-fil-A and will post up at the entrance to the high school, because that's the target group we're looking at, the kids driving. And if you are found wearing your seatbelt and being, you know, in compliance, you get a chicken sandwich and, and you can just imagine that, uh, you know, there's a lot of parents getting relief on that day on their food budget because those kids get their, their snack before they leave. So, uh, with that, we, uh, do the strike two with Sheriff DePaolo. Uh, was done, Brian Herman has the sheriff come out with some, some inmates that have a, a discussion about their life story that, you know, that they've been involved in OUI accidents where there's been, um, um, serious injury or fatal, uh, fatal, um, occurrences that, uh, they come out and they talk about, not only about how their decisions changed their life, but how it changed a lot of other people's lives. So education at the high school level is really, uh, a, a big thing. We work the, um, the mock crash that they do every year with the high school students before prom time. Brian Moon works and Brian Gillis work primarily with the younger grades, uh, school safety and bus evacuation drills. We do bike safety programs. We do, get helmets from, uh, grant money and we give that out to the kids as well. Uh, we also do a, uh, Operation Yellow Blitz where we'll go out and we'll follow the buses around and see if people are passing them when they, when they, when they shouldn't be. Um, and again, every Wednesday, Brian Herm, uh, Brian Gillis and Brian Moon also do a, um, inst, child passenger safety seat installation program, which is pretty much open to everybody. We don't turn anybody away. And we find that we have a lot of folks from other towns that come in to have their cars, child safety seats installed properly, um, just because their communities don't do it. So, uh, we, we, we try never to turn anybody away, you know, it's, uh, it's important to us to make sure that they have that, uh, that, uh, available to them. Um, and lastly, the enforcement and effectiveness, I think they kinda go hand in hand. Uh, can't drive around at Wilmington without seeing some blue lights turn in someplace and it really tells the people to slow down. We do target specific areas. But our effectiveness, um, we kinda gauge with reduction of traffic accidents. It's, it's a difficult dimension because it's not perfect, but we've seen a steady decrease from '07, from 724 accidents to 479 in '08 and 425 in '09. Um, so we, we think we're doing well. OUI arrests, we've gone up. We went from 53 in '07, 66 in '08 to 73 this last year. So, um, you know, we continue to do that enforcement. We work with our partners in the state. Um, the Registry of Motor Vehicles, uh, comes out with us and helps us through the seatbelt enforcements and the compliance checks. Uh, we, we hope to sometime in August, have the state police come out with their Batmobile and we'll do a sobriety road check somewhere on Route 38. So, um, I appreciate your time. Um, you know, I think what the gentlemen have done here is, is really phenomenal. It's, uh, you know, a self-assessment and every year we get better as we look at the dimensions that the assessors look at. They give us a scorecard and we try to make those things increase, those numbers increase. And, and that's why we've attained the gold. So, uh, you know, if I pass this around, if everybody wanna get a picture with it a little later, it's, uh, just the award that they give us, uh, from the state. So I'll entertain any questions.
I, I just could say personally, I'm, I really believe in community involvement and c- community outreach. I think what you're doing with your department and you guys and all those programs you've just named are phenomenal. And, um, we do get a lot of comments about the Wilmington Police Department, uh, not gonna mention any surrounding towns, but I've recently spoken to some of their police officers and, um, the, the, and not just the, the police officers, the other residents in other towns. And I think the outreach that you're doing is phenomenal and, uh, I commend you and congratulate you on your, uh, moving up to the gold.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jeff?
Not only the chief, you gotta congratulate the guys in the trenches. I mean, you guys really make it happen and it means a lot. Forget about being a politician or owning a business. I get real excited when I hear you working with the kids. And let me say, as a parent, I've got a son who just got his license. It means a lot to make sure he puts his seatbelt on, he obeys the law, he does not speed. I tell him, kid, you speed, the license is gone, not only because of me, because the new law's in the state and I all support that. But that alone, you know, kids today, there's a lot of challenges happen. As a parent, now I see all these things and it really means a lot when you work with these kids. That means a lot, getting the kids educated, that way hopefully when they become young adults and they become citizens of this community, they become better citizens. And it means a lot. Education is everything. I really appreciate it as a parent. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, uh, a couple of things. You covered so much ground in all the different programs and just from a, from a personal standpoint, some, uh, some comments that folks have shared with me. Cops from other towns in, in the state at the highest level that, um, you know, have, have complimented the town of Wilmington and the, and the department on a number of occasions, uh, and especially in terms of visibility, you know, and focused on how much visibility is important to prevent problems rather than trying to mop them up. Um, so I, I just wanna share that with the general public as we're here. Um, and accessibility of. Another one that, uh, in terms of education, I couldn't agree more. I won't say everything that Mr. McCoy just said, but I couldn't agree more. And I think it's also interesting, uh, I went to a CPR course a few years ago and, um, one of your cops was giving the course and it may have even been Mr. Herman who made a point to me, you know, I've never been as diligent as I should with the safety belt. And the point that was made to me that really resonated, uh, and made a difference was, if you get in an accident without a safety belt, you're just another 200 pounds, uh, 220 pound, whatever it is, flying object with, with your kids in the car. And that, um, I've, uh, repeated that to a number of people and, and it's just something that, uh, you know, hit home with me. So I'll take this opportunity to throw it out there in, in public. And lastly, the, uh, the program with the, uh, the seats for the infants and the, you know, the, the offerings that you have in that regard, they're, they're terrific and get a lot of compliments on that. So of all the different programs that you said, those things certainly hit home with me and, and I hear the most compliments from, from other folks. So keep up the good work on that front.
Chief, I have to admit, you know, um, the same as they all just said. I mean, it's hard to add to that list of everything that they gave you, um, praise about, um, but to you, your department, um, i- inside the community, outside the community, I've heard nothing but a high praise about the professionalism of this department, um, the hard work, the ethics, the, um, the manners, even when they start and give tickets, believe it or not, people don't get, you, you know, they, they, they talk to me even outside the town and, uh, you know, they're not even, you know, mad about it. They just say they were very professional and, and, um, oncoming, they deserved it. And since that, that's a, uh, a, you know, a compliment when you, when you go through that. And, um, all through the years, I think this department's really, uh, been on the top of the best they can be. I don't think any year, um, has gone by that I think they've slacked. I, I see them wanna get better and better and they, they take it with great pride. And you can see it, you can see it on the street, you can see it in their faces. I think, um, Wilmington should be very proud of this department.
Indeed. I will, uh, well, everything's been said so well, uh, by my colleagues. Uh, I won't say congratulations again, um, but I will say thank you, uh, really, and I mean that from the heart. Thank you for the hard work that you do every single day, um, and doing the things that, frankly, I'm, I don't have the courage to do and I depend on you to have that courage and to go out there and do it every day. So thank you very much. Thank you, Chief, and congratulations. Um, and, and our, the chairman mentioned community outreach and, and for me, what's important is, uh, what I don't witness in Wilmington, what I don't feel as a resident in Wilmington is any sense of, oh geez, the cops are at the door or, you know, there's no sense of fear, that's not the animosity, it's not us against them, is really very much, in my opinion, uh, a feel of, we're all in this sort of together. You're there to protect us, not to catch us. Um, and I think that's an important thing that starts at the beginning when the kids are young and they develop a, an affinity for and a, and a, an appreciation for the men in uniforms. So thank you very much and congratulations. Good job and we'll see you in gold next year too.
I, I think that the sentiment with the gentlemen that are here with me tonight and all my officers is, first and foremost, we wanna thank the community for allowing us to do what we do. Um, it, it really is a, a labor of love, so to speak, um, you know, we, we have bumps in the roads from time to time, but it certainly, I mean, uh, I, I love this job and I love the community of Wilmington and I'm sure that I speak on behalf of my entire department that, you know, we, we're here and, and we have everybody's best intention at heart. And, and this is just one of the, the things that we do and I think we do well and I'm happy to be able to recognize the, the men that were directly involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
No, I think they've, you, they're, they're, uh, communications.
If the chief would, um, remain, Mr. Chairman, we, we received, as you know, uh, correspondence that was directed to the Board of Selectmen from Sheila Burgess, Director of the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, uh, regarding the zero tolerance enforcement policy for seatbelt violations. And, uh, she was asking the board to, uh, consider adopting a zero tolerance policy. And I did ask the chief, obviously, to, uh, comment on this and he's provided his memorandum to you, which essentially, um, reiterates a commitment to, uh, doing exactly what, um, Ms. Burgess is suggesting, but, uh, I thought it best that he make the comments on this with your permission.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike. Recently, you received that correspondence and, and I think it was basically just a, um, a misfiling of, of our policies and procedures, which have been on, on file with the Executive, Executive Office of Public Safety. Um, I did send them back out to her and in that policy and procedures, she specifically asks for, um, language that's kind of, uh, consistent with, uh, the federal standards, which basically, um, states that, uh, you know, in our policy, safety belt violations, failure to properly wear safety restraints by occupants of motor vehicles in one of the main, is one of the main causes of serious or fatal injuries. Enforcement of seatbelt laws by the Wilmington Police Department is a priority and the preferred response to the violation of 90 chap, uh, general law, chapter 90, section 13A is a written citation. And, you know, I, I think consistently, we show that that's one of the things we, uh, we, we do address. Seatbelts for adults is a secondary violation, so in other words, you have to be stopped for something else. And, and I think that, you know, the officers, um, they have a lot of compassion for the citizens of Wilmington and they really try to give a lot of warnings out there, but it's one of the issues that a lot of the officers are, feel, feel compelled to address is the seatbelt, um, lack of using a seatbelt. seatbelt, lack of using a seatbelt. And I can say firsthand, I've seen many accidents where people are not wearing seatbelts, and it's sad because the equipment is there. I've also recently just observed a rollover about a month and a half ago, and the gal was wearing a seatbelt, and, and her car went end over end at least twice on I-93 at about 55, 60 miles an hour, and she walked away. So, you know, the, the stuff in her car was strewn out all over the highway. So certainly, I mean, seatbelts do save lives, and it's, it's something that we, we really want the citizens of the community to, to make a commitment to make sure that they, they do wear them.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I'll be honest, I don't even know that number.
I'm guessing that it's probably a clean-up from a, a recorded, a recorded message from somewhere you'll call, you know how you just call different messages.
Any other questions from, from the board?
Do I understand this to be by virtue of the fact that you have brought to, I can't find the one, to Ms. Burgess's attention, that language in our policy? We are now listed as one of the towns that has the zero tolerance policy. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Then thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
The chief mentioned that the audience could ask him questions when you spoke earlier. First of all, I'd like to commend him, and especially Officer Rooney, because I, I wasn't aware that Officer Rooney was leading the charge against people operating out of the influence. So, you know, if you could just relay that comment, that I appreciate that. And I also like to mention that I was in an accident about a year ago where a guy ran to a stop sign, and thankfully I had my seatbelt on because I didn't even have any time to react. It just, he just plowed into me, and it definitely, you know, saved my life. But one thing I would like to bring up, and I thank the chief for his good work on these areas, but I didn't hear the chief mention anything about catching any drug dealers or anything like that. And we just had a, a student, I believe, overdose and die in Wilmington. And I'm familiar with people in Wilmington who are taking care of children, grandparents taking care of children, because they have to deal with heroin-addict kids. And I heard from, I believe it was one of your offices, that the heroin problem in town is a significant problem. So I'm concerned about that. The other concerns I have, I know you have a DARE program where officers go into the schools, and I drive by some of these schools, and I see way too many students smoking. And then I go to a place where they sell cigarettes, and I see, we don't sell to people under a certain age. And I don't hear, hear of you guys, especially the DARE officers approaching these students that are smoking, saying, who's selling you the cigarettes? Let us investigate that. And I would appreciate some investigation in that area. The other thing that's disturbing is I read the town crier last week concerning this particular area of crime, let's call it, that our school superintendent was given a raise to 160.
We're talking about the law enforcement challenge programs and all the accolades that the, that the department has had. You've made some point about-
I think they can work together. I think-
Right, you made some points about drug problems and smoking. The chief wants to answer those.
Yes, just, just briefly, and, and you're always welcome to come to my office and discuss these situations. Mr. McDonald, I can give you as much information as I can. There is a, a general heroin problem in the Northeast. It's, it's, it's a shame, but, but it is there. And, and we battle that every day, and, and, you know, there's nothing more disheartening than me and my career for the number of times I've gone to parents and I've had the conversation about the, the loss of their loved one in this situation. And we, as a police department, do everything we possibly can to, to investigate that and take those people to justice who have dealt those drugs. We take the, the, the problem very, very serious. And we work on it several levels, the education through the DARE program, enforcement. And I've, I've actually driven many a person that needs help across the state to, to drug rehab situations and, and, and got them in and made multiple phone calls to, to get them taken care of. So we take it very serious. As far as smoking goes, I, I know that it does happen. It's, I believe it's down pretty much with, with the kids that age of the school age, and we do address it on a regular basis. If they are observed, we do follow up on it. So-
I just constantly see it on Adams Street, and it's disturbing to me that a school superintendent isn't really taking charge of this.
Thank you for coming tonight, chief. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Communications?
Chairman, continuing communications. You have an MMA legislative alert primarily discussing the $687 million potential loss in federal funds that is triggering cuts across the state budget. Those are the federal Medicaid reimbursement percentages that Congress and the United States Senate and the president have supported various times, but at this point, those funds are in jeopardy, and the state is acting accordingly and passing their budget. And what I wanted to just bring to your attention is that the, the Senate-House Conference Committee has agreed upon budget numbers. And in terms of local aid, I provided you with a local aid breakout for the town of Wilmington. And it just shows where we were last year and what our expectation is for the coming year. And it also shows it against the estimate for, for this year. And so we're still, we're still okay in the, in terms of where we are at the moment. My, I anticipate that based upon what we budgeted, where we were anticipating a local aid cut, that would be far more significant, and that's how we budgeted for fiscal year 11, but far more significant than what it apparently will be, although there is a cut. For the town of Wilmington, we're still in comparatively good shape. It's interesting that the conference committee numbers look to be very close to what the House original numbers were. They're less than Senate Ways and Means numbers, but they are pretty much the same as what the House passed back a few months ago. In any event, we're still, we're still waiting for final numbers. So all, all of this is all well and good, but we're still waiting for that final budget which has yet to be passed. But there's certainly, based upon these numbers, there's no reason to push any panic button at this point. We received a letter, the Board of Selectmen specifically received correspondence from Charles River Laboratories, from Stephen Morley, Executive Director of Corporate Security there, asking the board to consider designating an, an area within the immediate vicinity of 251 Balladville Street as a no parking area. There have been concerns there, particularly during morning rush hour periods, as what, what is happening is large trucks are just staying on the street in that area, and they're waiting to, to move to various locations. And as a result, that has become a problem in that area of Balladville Street. So I contacted on your behalf both Chief Begonis and Superintendent Onisette, asking them to review the request from Mr. Morley and to provide a recommendation to the board for this meeting. And they have done so, and you have their memorandum, memorandum, one from Chief Begonis, who indicates that he's reviewed the request of Mr. Morley and recommends approval of the no parking signs as requested. He states that, that the police department has been active in attempts to move overnight parking and the staging of tractor-trailer units for some time at the request of Charles River Laboratories, and it is his judgment that no parking signs would help address the traffic flow and safety issue on Balladville Street. We also have a recommendation from Superintendent Onisette, who indicates that the request was reviewed by his department in consultation with Safety Officer Brian Moon, and the Department of Public Works would also have no objection to the request. So it's my recommendation that the board authorize by motion the installation of no parking signs at 251 Ball, at the 251 Balladville Street vicinity.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen authorize installation of no parking signs at the 251 Balladville Street location.
I'll second. Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. You will recall that at your meeting of June 14th, you voted unanimously to support two pieces of legislation. One, an act to require producer responsibility for collection, reuse, and recycling of discarded electronic products; and the other, an act relative to producer responsibility for mercury-added lamps. You directed that I write to both the Speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo, and the House Chairman of Ways and Means, Charles Murphy, to indicate that it was the board's intention to support having a House floor vote as soon as possible on these particular legislative initiatives. And we did send that letter per your request. We have received one response to date and, in writing, and that was from Chairman Murphy, who wrote, "Thank you for your letter relative to the Board of Selectmen's support of these two bills." Paraphrasing here, it indicates that one bill requires the producers of electronic waste to take financial responsibility for recycling their end-of-life products, and the other requires manufacturers of mercury-added lamps to implement a statewide mercury-added lamp recycling program. He writes that by requiring producers of electronic waste to absorb the cost of recycling their end-of-life products, proponents say it will relieve a financial and environmental burden on cities and towns. According to experts, discarded electronics make up the fastest-growing portion of the municipal solid waste stream in the Commonwealth, and less than 20% of the 183,000 tons of e-waste generated in Massachusetts is recycled. So the proponents of the other piece of legislation point to the extreme toxicity of mercury and the negative effects the element can have on the environment when discarded into landfills rather than recycled. Among other components, the recycling program required by the bill would include convenient collection locations throughout the state where mercury-added lamps can be deposited for recycling at no charge to the household consumer. Chairman Murphy writes, "While both bills aim admirably to address important concerns relative to the environment and municipal finances, I would suggest we proceed cautiously. These measures would assess significant new costs to the manufacturers of popular products. As our economy limps toward recovery, we must strike the right balance between economic growth and environmental stewardship." That's the letter that we got back. But the board's on record, and unless the board wants me to take any other action, I believe they remain on record in support of the legislation.
I appreciate Representative Murphy writing it, and I echo his concerns. I mean, striking the right balance between economic growth and environmental stewardship, whether it's with regards to this or any other action, I think that's something that we all must be doing.
The board has correspondence from the Shawshing Valley Technical High School, where pursuant to the requirements of law, he has notified the board of the attached vote that was unanimously approved by the District Committee at its meeting held on June 8th. And they voted to appropriate $4,687,847 to pay the cost of designing, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing a health and life sciences wing at the district's high school. And the vote is a similar vote that we took with regard to the MSBA, the feasibility study for the high school. This is a vote specific to the construction. It was further voted that within seven days from the date in which the vote is adopted, the secretary was instructed to notify the Boards of Selectmen of each of the towns and the districts of this vote. And so I would bring your attention really to the attachment that is dated June 14th and addressed to the chairman. And essentially, this is where the Board of Selectmen can act one way or another. They attach the vote and a copy of the award letter and the final grant award for the $2,612,537, which is the MSBA share of the construction project. In February of 2009, the district originally submitted this project for federal stimulus funding. A copy of that proposal was shared with town managers. It was not, in fact, approved. In the spring of 2009, the District Committee endorsed the superintendent's recommendations to phase out the existing diesel program and replace it with health and life science programs. There was a meeting with all the district town managers on June 2nd to discuss various finance options, and we gave our recommendations to the superintendent at that time, where we agreed that a 10-year bond issue would be most favorable. Within that 10-year bond issue, there is some assurance that there would be no increase in capital costs to any member communities, both in fiscal year 11 or in fiscal year 12. We voted a particular option to go forward unless there was objection from any of the committees. The next paragraph is really the specific paragraph to the board. "If your board so desires, it may call a town meeting for the purpose of expressing disapproval of the amount voted by the committee, and that must happen within 60 days of the attached vote." It's my recommendation that the project is a, it's a good project, I think, that certainly the Finance Committee has heard about this at length at, at the Budget Committee meeting. I'm sure the board has probably talked about this. You may be interested in looking at the financing, the financial implications on the town of Wilmington. That would be on the last page. I would bring your attention to the last page, which is the school financing plan for the 10-year bonds. You can see that in 2011 and 2012, this is the capital portion of our assessment. Our assessment is above $2,150,000 or $160,000. This is just that capital assessment, and it remains the same, the $120,000. In 2013, for Wilmington, it would go up to its highest level of 152, and then again, begin to go down again as the payoffs are made. So the, the 120 really is the baseline, which is already a part of our assessment. If the board would rather have this action go to a town meeting, they can certainly vote to have a town meeting. It's my recommendation that this is a, a good and meaningful project for Shawshing Tech. It's similar to what the high school did, when we renovated the high school, some of the shop areas and converted those. And we did that most recently with about $1 million that was left over from the middle school project, as you recall, putting in computer labs and the like, as some of the area was certainly obsolete. And that's what's happening there with the diesel shop. So I'm not sure if the board wants to take any action. No action means that, that there is approval in this case for this project.
Any questions or comments?
Just based on the manager's explanation, I'm not inclined to take any action, but I just wonder, just for my, so I can get it through my, my head here. When you referenced the baseline on the last page, can you just tell me again the significance of those numbers?
Yes. The, the town is assessed approximately $2,160,000 or so, and of that amount of money, $120,000 is for bond repayments from prior construction projects that have been approved at Shawshing Tech. That's our proportional share. You'll see that Bedford and Burlington are both at $71,688. Even though they have less than 10% of the population, they by law have to pay for at least 10% of the capital amount. And then the other three communities, Bill Ricker in Tewksbury and Wilmington, pay based, proportionally based upon its student membership. Bill Ricker pays 36%, Tewksbury 27%, and Wilmington 17%. So the, the cost to Wilmington for this particular project does not begin until 2013. And at that point, the assessment will go up by about $32,000. It's unclear are the capital portion of the assessment will go up by $32,000. It's, it's too early to tell whether or not- It's too early to tell whether or not the assessment will continue to stay stable and decrease as it has in the last few years, or whether it'll creep up again. But it's my best estimate that there's not going to be any major change in overall assessment to the town.
Got you. So the increase in the assessment due to bond repayments?
Yes.
At least for the Town of Wilmington, it's only something of the order of about $32, and then it decreases from there?
And then it decreases from there, and by the time we get to 2019, it actually goes below what it is today.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
That assumes, if I may, that assumes no additional new capital projects that come in to play between then and now?
That's right.
Okay.
Because I see a decreasing payment schedule here, but again, I'm assuming that that is, that it's a line in the sand. If everything stays the same as it is now, this is the way that the payments would work, but it's likely that something else will come up.
Could be.
Okay. Seems like we're getting a lot of bang for our buck, as far as I'm concerned.
We'll be good? No? On the same page, Tom Skrull?
Certainly, if the Board, you know, wanted to hear from Mr. Lyons at some point about this project, the Chairman wants me to bring him in, I'd be glad to do that at some point.
Maybe we should schedule him to come in.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is this for life health sciences?
Nursing, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I've always looked upon nursing and health and doctors as more academic than technical and vocational. And I know that Wilmington High School has some health sciences courses. It seems to me that this particular thing is more academic than technical and vocational, and I would just like to see if the Board would take a look at, instead of putting this at the Shawshing Tech, enhancing our high school program and looking at this as more professional.
I think what we're talking about here is the finances of the program, of the building and the structure of the building. We're not talking about the educational, what they're teaching in there right now. So I think it's kind of out of our hands there. We're just talking about the budget here on that.
No, I think you're right. I mean, the Board of Selectmen has no authority over the curriculum at Shawshing. But I would say to you, they've done a thorough analysis of this, and clearly, the movement is not towards diesel anymore. But when you look at where the need is in the local economy, the need is for folks in health services, not necessarily registered nurses or M.D.s, but assistants, you know, clinical assistants at the various hospitals. These are the kinds of people that they will be training, and there is clearly a major need for this. And the other point I would make is that I would describe Shawshing Tech as something more than simply a vocational school. It is also, it's really a comprehensive school and has a very good academic reputation. And I would think, I think the number is about 75 or 80% of the kids there now are going on to secondary education. So they find that this is a niche that needs to be addressed. The area of healthcare is something that is expanding. When there are very few disciplines within our economic structure that are expanding, this is one of the areas that is. So they're going to train people, train young people to be able to get jobs when they get out of school.
How long was the $32,000 going to be paid, how many years?
10 years.
10 years, so...
The bond issue is 10 years.
So it's basically over $300,000?
No, it's decreasing.
Is there a projected amount, total amount?
For Wilmington's share? Let's try to do a quick add point if you'd like. It's probably around $200,000.
$200,000?
For Wilmington's share.
And that's just the structure part, or is it educational professionals?
That is the construction, design, and equipment and furnishings.
And so would there be more teachers hired for that?
No, the operating costs, there will be, the teachers that are now involved with the diesel shop, where they're only down to about eight students, would be phased out, and other staff would be brought in. So the overall operating budget is not going to, you know, it's going to be negligibly affected.
So the Board looks like we want to take no action on this, is that correct?
I think it's a great idea to let that school expand just the major studies. You know, they get high honors over there as far as turnout, you know.
We'll have Mr. Lyons come in or the...
I say support it.
Wait a minute. Okay. Very good.
The Board has been provided with an MMA legislative alert that we just received, which addresses the Comprehensive Economic Development Bill that would extend all local development permits by three years. The House Committee on Ways and Means released this bill, and it includes in the opinion of the MMA an unnecessary inconne productive provision that would extend all state and local development permits by three years. This would be done unilaterally to the term of any commercial or residential permit in effect between January 1, 2008, and January 1, 2011, including permits granted under the Zoning Act and the subdivision control law and any other local permitting statutes. The measure appears to be pushed by the development community as a statewide solution to the financing problems that some projects have faced due to the recession. But in the opinion of the MMA, this one-size-fits-all approach would extend thousands and thousands of permits with no evidence that this has justified a good public policy. I would agree that in this instance, we should not be diluting the authority that is now vested in the cities and towns to extend local permits. They have that authority to do that under the law, and this attempts to do it just en masse, without any local approval. Bring that to the attention of the Board. The Board also has correspondence from the Mount Washington Select Board regarding a Wind Energy Siding Reform Act legislation that I've provided for your information. They're looking for support on this. I don't see particularly where it affects the Town of Wilmington, but certainly they'll take any action if the Board so desires. The Board has a letter from Bronis Simon, the Executive Director, the State Historic Preservation Officer for the Massachusetts Historical Commission regarding the Butters Farmhouse. We had applied for additional grant money in the fiscal year 11 grant cycle, and they indicated that we were not one of the awardees. Some, with some degree of irony, I guess, received a call today through Terry McDermott, the museum curator, that the Commonwealth's Historical, Mass Historical Commission called to say that there may be some grant funding available through the fiscal 2010 grant round, that there was still some grant funding available. And as you know, we'd already accessed what we thought was our total amount from that apportionment. And so we put together a very quick grant contract proposal, and I signed that this afternoon, and we may know about whether or not we can get about $8,000 additional dollars to help us finish that project. The Board has a letter from Sheriff DePaola, the Middlesex Sheriff, inviting you to attend the 11th Annual Youth Public Safety Academy graduation. The Middlesex Youth Public Safety Academy teaches children the value of public safety, including team-building skills, cyberbullying, internet safety, et cetera. There are some young people from our community who are among the cadets that will be participating during the week of July 26th, and the graduation for that group will be held on Friday, July 30th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Sheriff's Office Training Academy in Billerica. Anybody who is interested in the Board of Selectmen attending can certainly let my office know through Beverly or RSVP directly to the individual listed on the invitation. The Board is being asked to consider approving town council contract for fiscal year 2011. You have communication that I provided to you that had been sent to the Chairman from John Foskett, and the Chairman has made this an agenda item for today. So I guess I need to get some direction from the Board on this, and the Board needs to, obviously, you've already appointed Attorney Foskett and Deutch Williams as town council. The contract that I provided for you is the current contract. You know, I didn't make any changes. It's the current contract. If the Board is so inclined to approve a contract, we can have the contract prepared for signature. As you can see, Mr. Foskett is asking for consideration for a modest increase in the contract amount from $250,000 to $255,000.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Foskett, in his brief email, simply to reflect increases in operating expenses, he goes on to say he's sensitive to the financial circumstances which all communities face, et cetera, et cetera. Also mentions that in view of there was no increase in fiscal year 2010, he looks forward to providing a very high level of service. So, you know, those are bullets that caught my eye. $5,000, it's not a huge amount of money. It didn't get an increase in 2010, but there is a very valid observation there that lots of people aren't making more money this year. So, you know, I don't know. I just, I wanted to have a dialogue. I didn't want to just rubber stamp this through. I wanted to just make sure we're talking about it before we either vote on it or vote to approve it or some other thing.
I also believe they didn't get an increase in 2009 as well.
Is that right?
Correct me if I'm wrong, is this their third contract since it's been under fixed fee?
I believe, I believe it is.
Third or fourth?
Either. Do you recall? I think this is...
If I think about it, I can remember. It was...
2008?
July, July 1 of 2007, so that'd be FYO8, right?
Yes.
Eight, nine, 10, so actually it would be four.
This would be the fourth.
It would be the fourth without an increase.
Right. Well, it's my view, they deserve it. It's just a question of, you know, because lots of people deserve it, so...
Well, the other thing you're looking at is, unfortunately, you know, I have no issue giving the $5,000, but, you know, timing is everything. I mean, obviously, we negotiate with the town, you know, and other unions, et cetera, so, I don't know, maybe we need to just be consistent.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you could look at it that way also, that, like we just said, the last three years of this contract have been the same.
Yeah.
Zero, zero, zero. And the $5,000, I believe, works out to about 2%?
It'll be 2%, and it has been the same. I would comment that the service, in my judgment, has radically improved, and it's been very, very responsive. It's not unusual for me to be talking to council, to different council, two or three times on a day. I think you've seen all the correspondence. It goes back and forth, and so I think certainly I understand the considerations with the economy. There has been no increase. 2% is pretty minimal, and we do, the zeros that town employees took were this past year, and the Board knows what we're doing this year.
Any other questions, comments, motion?
I think I've heard from most people, I don't have any objection to it. You know, 2% I think we can handle, and, you know, I think it's probably the right amount to demonstrate that we recognize the level of serve we're getting and in the big picture, not really costing the taxpayer the amount of money over the long haul. So as we continue to try and negotiate these collective bargaining agreements too, let's make sure we're recognizing that they're, that council is working for us.
If you're making a motion, I'd second it with the understanding, now that I'm hearing, what, three years in a row, zero, 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 so I'd have no issue with that.
So that was a motion?
So moved.
And seconded. Okay. Are all in favor? Both? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Public comments? New business, committee reports?
I know the manager will cover important dates, just best wishes to everybody for happy and safe Fourth of July, and looking forward to another successful job by the Fourth of July Committee and everybody who supports that.
Anyone down there?
Well, I was going to talk about form-based code for another half an hour, but I think we've heard enough tonight. No, happy Fourth of July, happy Independence.
Great.
I'd just like to, summer's here, and I just hope the, all the families in the community have a very enjoyable and safe summer, all the families and individuals in the community. And again, I hope they, next week and this week, enjoy the Fourth of July and put due time at the common and make, you know, a very family atmosphere with the community warm. So again, happy summer.
All said. Communications. I'm sorry, important things.
Important dates. Just the Fourth of July festivities did kick off today, and they go through till July 4th. The major events, the Family Day fireworks are at the Town Common on July 2nd. Family Day, though, is Saturday, July 3rd, and the spectacular fireworks is that same evening on July 3rd. I think we've mentioned, now I'm not sure whether we mentioned at the last meeting, the Liberty Mutual contest. I'm not sure that we did. I think we got notified afterwards, and we've been talking about this, people know about this, I'm sure. But I think we certainly want to thank all of the residents of the community, all of the businesses that participated, the organizations who got together and participated in Liberty Mutual's Save the Fourth contest. If you are not familiar with that, they ran a contest where they, you went online and took an eight-question history quiz, and they opened this up to communities across America. And the prize for the communities who participated and tallied the most votes was a $10,000 grant to be used towards their Fourth of July program. There were 10 communities that were selected, four in the small category, three in the medium category, three in the large category. The Town of Wilmington was the winner in the medium category out of all the communities across the country that participated. And we will be receiving that $10,000 shortly. I've been in touch on a number of occasions with John Attali from the, from Liberty Mutual to talk about when we're going to get that check, but he assures me that it's coming.
In the mail?
It'll come in handy, and I can tell you that it will come in handy, obviously, because the, what many people don't realize, and maybe they do, but the town, and it's supporting the program that is run so well by the Fourth of July Volunteer Committee, spends about upwards to $50,000 a year in that support of that program. So we're not paying the bill for the fireworks, but we're paying for the police officers that provide for public safety, for all of the members of the Department of Public Works that are there, for the firefighters, for the public buildings personnel. And this money certainly will come in handy during this economic downturn everywhere. And this money certainly will come in handy during this economic downturn everywhere. So Wilmington is grateful to receive that, and it is because of the, really, the patriotic fervor of the folks in the town of Wilmington who always seem to come out for a good cause like this, and their community effort resulted in bringing $10,000 to the town. So I thank them very much on your behalf for doing this. And there were so many groups, I won't begin to mention the groups, but certainly, the 4th of July was very prominent, and the 4th of July committee was very prominent in this effort.
Good committee.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt the important dates again? Something I neglected or forgot about was my observations from what I perceived and what I believe is an incredibly well-run event last weekend, the Relay for Life, that I know some of you were able to get to, and I know Mr. Cairo was there through the evening. Just, the short story is, it was a remarkably moving evening. I was there for a while, and I was just so very impressed with, again, with the people of Wilmington, and even some of the surrounding communities that came, so impressed with the organizers. And it just, it continues to be a remarkable event, and I'm excited and looking forward to being a part of it again next year, and I'm so happy that they've chosen to run that event in Wilmington. And so thank you, Wilmington, for representing us as a town so well at the Relay for Life. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The concert on the common program sponsored by the Recreation Department beginning on July 7th will be our first concert. And just to note that there are concerts each night this week through July, through the 4th of July committee, but this is a Recreation Department-sponsored concert. All are invited. 6:30 to 8 o'clock, the first concert features Renee Markou, who is a local vocalist, recent graduate of the high school back in 2006. I'm sure you'll enjoy her. On July 14th, a group called Peking and the Mystics will be performing on the common. To remind you that there is, there will be brush drop-off days on July 14th and July 17th. On the 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and on the 17th, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Pharma Recycling Center on Old Main Street. And the board will next meet on July 19th. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. entertain a motion to adjourn? So moved. Seconded. So a motion made, all in favor? unanimous? Thank you.